Good evening, everybody. And welcome. This is Monday, March 11th. It is 7:00 PM. And this is your school board meeting. We are going to kick the meeting off tonight right on time with our call to order. We'll go through our approval of the agenda. And the -- it's a study session tonight. We have three study session topics. The senior high school annual report. Rob Metz and his team will give that. The elementary facilities task force discussion. And that is a discussion tonight. And Sandy and her team with Paul will lead that. And then the school board compensation update. Each year we review that because we get paid the big bucks here. And then we have an action agenda of two items. That's the approval of the school board compensation and the approval of the changes to citizens' bank accounts and signers. And then communications and transmittals. And finally adjournment. Any discussion on the agenda? Nancy?
Yeah, I would move the agenda with one amendment that we add as the first topic, a superintendent search update. And then that the agenda proceed as you've read it.
With that amendment, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. We have the -- it moved and amended by Nancy. We can has seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. That's a 7-0 vote. Okay, so we begin -- we will begin tonight with an update on where we are in the superintendent search. And what I'll do is, we just came from a meeting to update ourselves on where we are. And so what we have done, the biggest thing so far, has been hiring the search team. And we've hired a team called School Exec Connect. These people have run superintendent searches all over the state of Minnesota. They also run them nationally. They're headquartered in Illinois. And we have four local former superintendents who are working with us in order to make the search work. On March 5th, this team met with over 150 individuals from within the district. And what we did was to communicate this meeting, the meetings that took place on this date. We advertised on the website. We put it in the inside scoop. We emailed and invited all of the members of the community and all of those who were selected to participate. We had 26 individual interview sessions. That included each of the members of the school board individually, the park association of teachers president individually, the superintendent as an individual, and then 18 others who were interviewed throughout the day. And that included 70-plus of our students. And so we had a very representative group. Unfortunately, it was kind of a tough day. Most of you remember that it was snowing pretty hard that day. But this is Minnesota. And again, we had over 150 people participate, including evening sessions with the public. We are now assembling the results of that. Our search team will do that for us. They will report back to us. And as a part of that, we have had out on the website what they call a survey monkey with a number of questions. We've already had over 156 responses to the survey. And so what I'm asking you to do right now, if anyone is watching us on television, the -- today is the day of the cutoff of that survey. It won't be cut off till midnight tonight, so you still have time. So right now, leave this meeting. Go out and fill out your survey monkey. But we've had a wonderful response, and we appreciate the responses that we will get also for the rest of the evening. We distributed a letter to all stakeholders on what our next steps are. But just to review those, what will happen is, as I mentioned, we have the results being firmed up. We'll have the survey monkey results come together tomorrow. That will be presented to the school board at our meeting next week. This will establish the criteria for hiring the new superintendent. And then the word is already out on the street that we are looking for a superintendent. And on April 29th, the search for candidates will close. And the school board will be presented with the five to six candidates that the School Exec Connect will recommend as the superintendent candidates. The -- on May 1 and 2, we'll have the first round of interviews by the school board. And then on May 7th, 8th, and 9th, we'll interview the final finalists. Those will be all-day meetings in which the public will be asked to participate. And so on the 9th, the school board will meet, and we will make the final selection. So it'll be a busy time for us over the next couple of months. And that is our update. Anything else that we should add? Nancy?
Yeah, I would just add that it's March 11th. So if you're watching this on March 11th, go do the survey, please. And on May 7th, 8th, and 9th, if you put this on your calendar, that's in the evening, that there will be evening meetings with the public with each of the three, which we anticipate to be three final candidates. So you would want to hold Monday, or whatever the days are, May 7th, 8th, and 9th, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, in the evenings, if you're trying to block out your calendar so you can come participate in that question and answer session.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. What we'll do now is proceed with our agenda. The study session topics. Number one on our agenda tonight is the senior high school annual report. Up?
We're having technical problems. Is there any way we can move to different places?
Okay, sure. Sandy, you want to go ahead and kick it off tonight? Thank you. So we'll move, the senior high will get their computer situation straightened out. What we'll do now is work on the elementary facilities task force discussion. And Sandy and Paul will run that.
Well, it looks like our technology is working since we're using the Elmo, so we're good. For those that don't know, I know you all know that we've developed an elementary facilities task force to take a look at our space issues that we have at the elementary schools. And we've met now five times, come a long way through a lot of processes in getting to where we are. And I'm going to have Paul Applikowski from Wold, who has been helping us with this facility study, take it from here and give you an update on where we're at.
All right, thank you. Well, what we're going to do tonight is talk about the options that the group has been developing, basically, the ones that have been considered. We'll talk a little bit about the ins and outs of those. Before we start, though, I wanted to ask a question. Sandy and I were talking, we were a little concerned that at the last meeting, there might have been some confusion about the space standards we applied. So I'll throw those on here, if that works, and just ask if there's any follow-up questions about how we did that. If you remembered, we, at the behest of the group, the planning committee, we went and worked with the principals to come up with some advice about how we should allocate space, particularly for specialist programs. So I just want to throw it open quick at the beginning to see if there's any questions about that, because it is one of the building blocks of the plan.
You know, Paul, I don't see that in our, the handout for this meeting. Is that, am I correct about that?
That's correct. It's from the last meeting. We presented it the last meeting. But again...
Then you better walk us through it, because we can't read what's on the board.
I'm not sure if it's necessary to go through that level of detail. Sorry about that. Didn't mean to throw you off.
This is the one where you had, like, equivalentated three more rooms, and then Peter Hobart 2 and Point 5, and then...
So I was talking about the allocation of space for reading rooms, space for Spanish classes, those kind of things.
It assumed the current level of class size that we have now, which has reduced over previous years?
Correct, correct. Yep. All right, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to throw you off. Just, I'll just flash this up here. This is the charge statement that the administration and board forwarded to the group. And I mostly just wanted to highlight some of the pieces that come into play here. The group was actually asked to look at a five-year solution for elementary facilities. That was the real charge. Because we had 10-year enrollment projections, we certainly looked at the 10-year impact of things. But again, their charge was actually to come up with a five-year solution. I'm going to do a quick summary, and then I'll talk a little bit in detail about the options. Let's do it this way. Is that as far as it goes? This is the matrix, and I just want to use this as a, as sort of an index of the options. Anytime you do facilities planning like this, there's basic options, and then there's many variations that come from those options. So you can trade this room or that room, or this part of that building for that part of that building. What we've tried to do is present the ones that make the most sense, and so we'll go through that in some detail. But these are the basic overarching things that we looked at. One of them is the status quo, which really is just a baseline. If you don't do anything, what happens as you move forward with enrollment? The second one is very similar to what I presented a few weeks ago, or I guess a couple months ago now, with you, is looking at the planning parameters that were in place in 2009. This option represents kind of a hybrid of that. But essentially, it's increasing class sizes and cutting some of the specialty programs in order to create more space in the building. So we looked at that. The next one I call central elementary. And that really is looking at the idea of relocating the community ed programs that are there and turning central into a larger elementary school. And there's some ins and outs to how you might do that. But we wanted to look at that as an option, because it's one of your larger facilities. The next one was creating a kindergarten center. And we looked at a couple of different options for how and where you might do that. The next one, we call Open Cedar Manor, which is somewhat self-explanatory, as a K5. The next one is to put additions onto the elementaries to accommodate the enrollment. That looks like it's coming to each one of those. And then the last two are really one option, but the group wanted to look at it as two sort of funding streams. So the first, the first one, there's elementary portable classrooms purchased. So that would be to put portable classrooms on three of the four elementaries and to purchase them outright, which would be the strategy you might use if you were going to plan on hanging on to them for a long time. And the second one was elementary portable classrooms lease, which is something that you're allowed to do as additional classroom space. You can use a lease levy to pay for those, and it lowers the initial capital investment.
Paul?
Hey, Paul.
Sure.
I had a couple of questions about this slide in particular that I don't think are covered in the remainder. The first, first one is that first column. I was curious if there's a rule of thumb for what type of excess capacity you would want. That's my first question. And the second one is unrelated. It's on the capital costs column. So you denote certain boxes that are key shortcomings?
Mm-hmm.
And you denote the $5 million for elementary additions as a key shortcoming, but you don't denote a $7.5 million capital cost for a central elementary as a key shortcoming? Is that...
Sure.
So if you could explain why?
Yeah, those gray boxes are, they're my editorial on them. And I was just trying to find sort of the worst part of each one to highlight. So I only gave each line one gray box. And in that, in this, in the case of central elementary, it's, looks to be the 10-year total cost. So I put the gray box over on the right on that one. That doesn't quite fit on this screen right now, but... Oh, really?
Yeah.
What you should have gotten looks like that. Doesn't...
We don't have it. That makes... We just don't have it in the...
It maybe didn't reproduce or something.
I'll shade it in manually.
I apologize for that. Must have been a reprographic thing. You also asked about capacity and how much excess space you should plan for. That's a very difficult topic, one that comes up anytime you're planning for future change. It came up a few years ago when we talked about reconfiguring then. It's a tricky topic. The most common planning number out there is 10% to have 10% open space. But if you do the math on that, you quickly see that that gets to be a lot of, lot of classrooms. So if you have 2,200 kids, you need 200, 200 students worth of open space. So if you're going to, if you're adding on, it's difficult to make another, I don't know, can't do that in my head, but it's a couple million dollar decision to put more classrooms on. So it's, it's hard to plan around that. What we've chosen to do with the committee is to plan on the peak enrollment number that the projections suggest, such that you're, you get to the sweet spot of you're just full based on the fullest projection, which hopefully will give you some margin of error.
Okay. So implicitly, are you saying we're judging right now, or as the peak, or...
No, the peak enrollment is 2,200 students, which is about five years out, something like that. It's within the next five years.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
Is that, is that based on the capacity?
The peak from the projections.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. And I'm going to try to briefly run through these projections. I'm going to focus on the last ones with a little bit more detail. Sure, another question?
Paul, did that, if you're answering Joe's question, I'll wait. But if you're moving on to another topic, I had a few more, I wanted to talk about your last slide.
Sure.
Just right at the start. So as I look at that, and if you move it over a little bit, it looks to me like the annual operating cost for each of those options is, is one column that you have there. And, and the central elementary, kindergarten center, and opening cedar manor all have a cost of half a million dollars a year that comes out of the general fund year after year after year after year after year, if we do that.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Reading that, okay. Whereas the other three add, addition, add-on options only have a cost from the general fund of about $30,000 a year. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Then my question really is about the portables versus permanent additions. And just, and maybe you're going to get to this later. If you are, you can stop me. But what I'm wondering is, if we put portables on anywhere, and then later we need to do an addition, is the cost of the portables all wasted at that point? Or is any of that reusable in any way?
No, it's not reusable. The cost, the capital cost that you're putting into those is foundations, which we don't know how to make compatible with a future addition of the building. And a link to the building, you're required to either have operable plumbing in the, in the units, in which case kids have to go outside to get into the unit, or you're required to have a weather control link to the building, which is what we've priced around.
And my other thought is, if you're going to come back later with any idea about portables, I would like to see some visuals of the aesthetics of what that looks like just as a factor, because I'm thinking of our neighbors, as in addition to the cost factor that I just asked about.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I guess I could take this moment to talk a little bit about process. The, the committee has come to agreement about what they think they're going to recommend to the, to the superintendent. There's still some vetting to do with that. So we anticipate spending the next month working through the selected options, if you will, to make sure that they're solid, good, and bulletproof in terms of their cost estimates and how we do that. With that, we will probably come up with diagrams of where on the buildings all these things would happen, and, and more detail of exactly what the options look like. Today is really an update on the process, so...
And are you going to recommend several options, and with the pros and cons of each?
I think it's the intent of the group, and per the charge statement, is to recommend two options. We're showing you the rest of them here as part of the process, basically, that they were looked at.
And Paul, on the portables, that's, is the 35 students, does that handle the numbers that we would need in Peter Hobart and Aquila?
Yeah, the 35 is based on the peak projected enrollment of 2,200 students. So if everything went as predicted in the enrollment projections, which is, maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't, you would have 35 seats left. And I'll say that 35 seats across the district is virtually nothing, because you don't, it may not be at the building that you want it to be at, or spread across all four of the buildings, so...
What did you use for the, was it the study we, for the enrollment projections?
It was Hazel Reinhardt's projections from last summer.
Hazel's projections, okay.
Any other questions?
Well, so essentially, the 30, the portables, there would be one portable somewhere, and hopefully that's in the right spot.
No, it's not one portable, actually. In the detailed option, I can show you where those would, where we anticipate them being put.
Okay.
And that's the kind of detail that we would be working out over the next month and come back with probably a more concrete recommendation. But we've made some assumptions in this, at this stage. Other questions? Well, I think since you're all such eager readers, I won't necessarily go through all of the options. With your permission, I'll skip up to the end, because that is really where the group is, is putting their attention. The last two options that you have, and I'll have to clarify, there was also one typo. We met on Wednesday night, and I turned the board packet in the next morning. The very last page, the header was cut off of the, it was on the previous page. So that last piece is actually not an option. It's an accessory to one of the options, and I'll clarify that in a minute. So let's go to page eight of the packet that you were given. This is called elementary additions. And again, the group is not quite done with their work, but it's their intent at this point to forward this as their primary recommendation. At the top, you can see the summary, and I'm not sure if, it's easier to read maybe this way, is to add on to three of the four elementary schools to accommodate the projected enrollment. It includes, from the planning standards, the allocation of additional rooms for schools with high free and reduced lunch. That's from the capacity exercise that we've talked about a couple of times. It requires that adjustment of about eight and a half extra rooms that we talked about last time. And it does include an addition for Peter Hobart's cafeteria, which is something that the group, even in the portable option, is recommending be done as a permanent, permanent This next chart shows the comparison of capacities. So these numbers here are the ones from the capacity report. Where I've put plus, that implies the addition that we do. So we're showing three rooms at 25 students on Aquila, four rooms on Peter Hobart, and two rooms on Susan Lindgren as part of this. That's, again, something we'll be studying in more detail. We've simply spread them around where it seems proportional to the, to the growing need, but we need to work on the detail of that a little bit. This column shows it against your October 1, 2012 enrollment. So you can see that with these additions, you'd end up with 94 excess seats. At the peak enrollment of 2,200 is how you get to that 10 extra seats. So if you hit the highest projection just right, you're basically full with this option.
Paul?
Sure.
You said the peak, and I don't recall Hazel's report offhand, but the peak is in five years.
Approximately. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact year, but...
So to noodle, or when you, when you, in the next month or whatever, if we were this option, you know, what do you do with that extra space then, as it starts coming back down? I mean, can it be, set a design thing? Can you design it so it adds on a gym space? Or somehow you could convert it and use it for another use if we didn't need it, all those, the classrooms in six years, or whatever?
Sure.
You know? Something to think about. What do you do with that?
Yeah, that's a tricky thing. Hazel's projections actually don't really go down. They then level off. So it looks like in the 10 years that that's not going to be an issue. However, if you remember how Hazel does her projections, after five years, you've, you've gotten all the people that were born, and it becomes much more dependent on the kindergarten number you use. So that flattening off may have some error in it. It's hard to tell. But certainly, we'd want to make sure we do that. And, and that's really the primary reason why I'm trying to not set aside 10% extra space, because it could be that you go above the projection, and you end up having to deal with a shortage of space again. That's a reality. But in order to not overbuild, I'm, I'm recommending you go to that peak projection, so...
Because at those cap stop, oh, sorry. It, because at the end, then, that's where we, part of our strategy then is we're holding on to this extra building. You know, with Cedar Manor, is that we always, we own that property, we have that property. It gives us flexibility. So when you're talking about where do you, it makes sense, I guess, is what I'm saying, that that's kind of your backstop when you have a whole other building? If you were to really over, you know, the projections way off, and we're really way over it on the peak? So I guess I'm, I'm saying that's a wise...
Based on my analysis, I can't imagine what set of circumstances would come up that it would make financial sense to open that. It, it could happen, but it seems that Hazel's projections would have to be grossly. Something, something gigantic would have to happen to change your enrollment to that, that degree.
Yeah, Paul, maybe this is coming back to your initial question on the assumptions, but does any of this take care of office space for principal at Peter Hobart? We were at a listening session, and we also heard some concerns, and they may not be factors in your committee, but I want to ask about an IEP meeting happening in a small space and not having enough chairs, because with parents and everybody had to be present, that was difficult. I don't know that we need to build on for that. I don't know if we maybe have other places those meetings could take place, or other options. But, but I don't think we need to have unhappy stakeholders, if that's the situation. I'm looking for solutions, maybe not, and then I'm asking you, is that, so the office space for the principal, and then what we do about meeting spaces and other smaller gathering spaces?
Sure. It's something that we do need to take more look at. And again, that's one of the details that I'll be looking at over the next month. My belief is that it will largely fix, it'll be largely fixed when we do this, because we'll give back some of those spaces in the media center, the places that have been taken over for instruction. And so they'll have a little bit more flexible space. But we'd like to sit down over there with them and talk about exactly what their needs are and figure that part out. I think, unless there's questions, I will skip over the rest of this, and we'll, we'll summarize the costs on the, the first page again when we get back to that.
Hopefully, this is a quick one. The, the very last opportunity on that one was, would offer opportunities to incorporate 21st century classroom concepts.
Sure.
How, how so?
Well, you have to look at that in comparison to some of the other options. If you do this, the portable option, you're going to get, the portable classroom units come with two classrooms per unit and a little hallway to connect them, and a, so you're going to have very little flexibility in how you do that. If we custom design these solutions, we have a lot more choices about how we connect them to the building, what the accessory spaces that go with them are, and really what's in those classrooms. So it's going to give us more flexibility to be forward-thinking in the solution.
Good. Thank you.
Then I'm going to take you to page nine. And page nine really is sized around the same problem as the elementary additions. It's, it's just solving it with portable classrooms. So a lot of the assumptions going into it are the same. This recommendation is for putting them at three of the four buildings. That's, again, something that we would want to work through over the next month and make sure that we are solid on that. Includes all the same assumptions for classroom space. And at the last meeting, the group really felt it was important in this option to include the addition at Peter Hobart for the cafeteria, that regardless of what happens, that's a small space for the size of school it is, and are recommending that that be done regardless.
And what does that involve? Moving the wall out 10 feet, or, you know, what?
Yeah, we, yeah, we would probably do, it is something about 10 feet out. We would take apart the wall that's there now to try to make it a free-flowing space. But certainly, those are things that we work on in the design. We talk in more detail about what that's going to be. It's about, I think, about a 1,700 square foot addition to get it to meet the MDE guidelines.
Paul, as I recall, when we were looking at this, maybe last year, and then when we were over there at Peter Hobart at the listening session, the principal said that your original thoughts had been to push out the cafeteria space, and then on the other end of the building to add on an addition for classrooms. And I'm wondering why we wouldn't build a second, if we were going to add on, why we wouldn't put a two-story addition over by the cafeteria and put our classrooms above the pushed-out cafeteria? If there's a cost difference, or what the thinking was, or if you need to think more about that?
Sure. It's certainly something we could investigate more. I think it has a number of challenges with it. One, the classrooms wouldn't be with the other classroom space, and there may be actually benefits to that, so that's something we could look at. The cafeteria addition itself is only about 1,700 square feet, where four classrooms are 900 times four, times a little bit extra for circulation and all that. So the two things don't really stack on each other. It's also difficult to go back onto an existing building and add another floor on it. It's usually not structured for that. So what you end up doing is basically ripping off the whole old roof, or completely rebuilding a new floor on top of it. And it's not very cost-effective that way. So you could put some classrooms on first floor, some on second, and do that. But that starts to trigger thing, you need an elevator then, a second elevator on that side of the building. So there's some things stacked against that. That corner of the site is also not the most... That corner of the site is also not the most spacious, so. I would say, though, what we've done is priced a generic addition, a certain amount of square feet plugged onto the building. So when we get to design, we would look at all those kinds of things and make sure that we're doing the best application. The capacity comes out very similar. The only difference here is you can see at Aquila, I have an extra classroom there, and that's just because the units come in sets of two. One unit has two classrooms in it, so I had to round up for that. And again, I think a lot of the rest of this is the same, so I'll go back to the summary page unless there's some questions about this.
Paul, in the addition of the temporary buildings, could they be put in for the start of school next year? Is that a possibility?
Maybe. I would recommend that sometime slightly after fall is what I would suggest now. If decision-making were done very fast, if the funding could be lined up and approved by the MDE very fast, which isn't easy right now with some issues that are going on there, maybe it could be done for fall, but it would be difficult. It would be a real race to get there. So I'll take you back to the summary matrix again, and we can talk a little bit how these compare.
Paul, so it sounds like those are the two options you're really looking at?
Those are the ones that the group is, yeah, narrowed down on.
Define the two. Additions and portable, or the two options of portable?
No, the permanent additions on the elementaries and the portable option. And one of the distinctions, there's two portable options on this matrix, one's to lease them and one's to buy them. At the last meeting, we talked about that a little bit, and one of the members got out the charge statement and reminded everybody that we were looking for a five-year solution. That was their direction. That's not their favorite option, that's their secondary option. And they recommended if the district's going to do that, that they consider that a five-year solution, not that that's a permanent fix. In the case of the five-year one, it sort of leans towards leasing them rather than buying them. If you keep them much longer than that, it seems to start to make sense to purchase them. So again, at the beginning, we talked about the shading, and I apologize if, I hope other ones aren't missing off of there, but as we looked at the options with the group, we kept coming back to the elementary additions, that that's the long-term best solution. We talked at length about the operating cost issue and how that can add up over time. So you can see, status quo obviously is a big issue because you don't fit, and you're going to start making other compromises to somehow make that happen. My editorial is that probably the solution to that is the next one down. You'll have to start, you don't have any more space, so you'll have to start increasing class sizes and changing programs and all that. So those two really weren't something the group felt they could recommend. The next two got quite a bit of discussion. The central elementary one really arrived, the basic concept of that one is that you would flip a school with PSI, because PSI's enrollment's capped, but it's in the biggest building, at least elementary-level building you have. And you'd then be able to flex the border of that school to make it bigger. So we looked at it in a number of different ways. The way that we presented it to you today is really to take all the kindergarteners, because if you start taking less, then you run into issues about who gets to go there, who doesn't get to go there, and how do you split it? So there is a range there, but ultimately, what it means is you're opening up another site for a kindergarten center or for central elementary. You'd have more administration there, more custodial space that you can't credit to community ed. So you're really opening another site, and you can see that's part of how the costs add up over time. And really, when you roll it out even over 10 years, it could be a longer solution than that, but those costs add up to the point where it seems like it's not the best option to go with. And likewise with Cedar Manor, you can obviously get into that fairly economically, because we've assumed some deferred maintenance there, but it's really that capital, or the operating cost over time that sets that one apart. And as I've noted here, it's really far bigger than what you need. It's even over the 10% excess that you might contemplate. So it's hard to imagine that the enrollment projections could really be that far off, and that you might see that kind of an increase coming. When we get down to the elementary additions, again, the group was very interested in this option. We spent a lot of time talking about different ways to do it, but ultimately, it seems like the hardest part about this is that there is a capital cost to do it, and that's estimated at about $5 million. And then the last two, you can see, portable classrooms, I think by definition, are not meant to be permanent solutions. And so the highlight here is really to say that the group's recommending that if you do this, that you consider it a five-year option, which as an architect, I would suggest means that in about three years, you better start figuring out what your next step is if you truly want to have a more permanent solution in six years.
I'm going to go back a couple of options. The central elementary option of, or flipping PSI with another elementary. We should make it clear, we're asking questions, not saying something's a good or a bad idea, but I don't understand some of the costs that are associated with that. And I'm not talking about, and maybe, well, maybe where I'm confused, it says flip PSI with another elementary or create a second elementary at Central, and then that would require relocating early childhood to somewhere like Cedar Manor. Is it possible to move one elementary school to the space that PSI has and have PSI in another school because there is extra space there without dislocating the rest of the building?
No. In fact, that's one of the biggest disadvantages, is that you're displacing community ed-
You have displaced.
And having to create a new elementary, a new elementary space there. You have a double move. You have two programs to move in that case. And that's part of why the capital cost gets to be so high, the $7 million.
I'm not quite understanding that. So if you just took, let's say PSI, and moved all those students and everybody over to Aquila, and took all of Aquila and put it into PSI, you're saying that that would be changing up the...
No, now you're at zero. I mean, you haven't spent any money, probably. I mean, you could probably just move the two schools, but you haven't expanded at all. So now the cost goes to, how do you use the other side of elementary for, how do you use the other side of Central for elementary school? You need to take the community ed programs out of there and put them somewhere else. And that, in this scenario, we contemplated that being Cedar Manor. So there's some cost to adapt Cedar Manor to be an early childhood building. And then you have to take what is now an early childhood building and get it suitable for an elementary school. And there's a lot of assumptions in our planning budgets here, but we assign basically a small renovation cost over the square footage to do that. But you end up moving two programs to get more space. So it's not the flipping of the schools, it's the expansion into the other side of Central.
So some of our schools that have smaller numbers of students than PSI couldn't, would actually take up the entire building of Central?
Again, our goal here is to get more space for elementary. So we can flip the school, there are larger and smaller elementaries in your district, but basically, to make a difference, to solve your problem, we need to push the border of Central and PSI over into the central side to get more capacity. So the targeted size to get to the sweet spot is about 850 students. You'd have to get Central to be an 850-student elementary school to just meet the needs.
I'm not following this, and let me try to work, let me try to be with you, Paul. You're saying that if we were going to put all of the excess space needs you're projecting into Central, that's when it would take over the entire, if all of that enrollment came in and we put all of that at Central, that is how that site, school would grow to be that size?
All of the excess.
All of the excess goes there with...
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
That's what he's saying, I think, in that assumption.
Yeah, so that would also require boundary moves, obviously. You'd have to shrink the other elementary boundaries to be the size that fits the building and put all of the excess at that facility.
And is that why that assumption then also has increased, I don't understand why it would have increased general fund operating costs if we're not opening another school, but just enlarging one at Central in that hypothetical?
Because the administration and group felt that if you were going to have a site of 850 students, that you would add administrative costs. You are actually covering more square footage. Currently, the square footage in Central is funded by the community ed fund, and you'd now have to fund that out of the general fund. So all of those things add up to the costs that we put in there.
What is the $30,000 operational cost for, if you put on the elementary additions on an ongoing basis?
Refresh my memory, Sandy, but it's basically maintenance costs and energy costs.
Says utilities in here.
Utilities, okay.
Basic building ownership costs, so there is, by expanding the elementaries, you do have some additional square footage to take care of.
Just a question on the status quo. Let's say, if we could just figure this out, maybe, you probably don't have the numbers now, but if we went back to class sizes where they were like two years ago or whatever, because we've experienced, we've been fortunate to experience a reduction, but if they went back to where they were, where does that number go, that minus 215, where would that go to?
That really is the next option down, pretty much. This one assumes a little bit of class size and a little bit less all-day kindergarten.
So all of a sudden, you're at a positive 138, you have excess.
You could do that, yeah. That planning assumption was 26 students average.
The second assumption, so the assumptions, that's where class sizes were two years ago when you made the original assumptions?
Yeah. I think what you'd really find is that you'd get to right around zero. So to get to the 138 excess, what I did is less all-day kindergarten, larger class sizes, less reading rooms. I sort of trimmed all this stuff back again, and what you'd really do is probably keep the reading rooms and some of the all-day kindergarten and increase class sizes. So you'd probably get right to the point where you were managing around what you could handle.
So, because, yeah, two years ago, we had some all-day, we had all-day kindergarten in some of the buildings already.
Right, right. So you would eat into that 138 and put some of those programs back?
If we scaled back the all-day kindergarten. Is that what you're saying?
Right. What I'm saying is, you might choose not to scale back all-day kindergarten and increase class sizes by one and a half or something like that. I think another option, or another part of that that we talked about with the group is, the reality is that you have, in the big scheme of things, relatively small elementary schools, so most of them are three-section elementaries. And when you have three sections, it can be difficult to balance class sizes. So the principals were helpful to point out that when I theoretically increase class size by two, in practicality, that's hard to implement. So if you get 10 more kids, do you open another classroom to reduce class size? Not really. And there's breakpoints in there. So it still may be difficult to get those average class sizes.
And that would vary from year to year, depending on the breakpoints.
Right, depending on...
So some years, you might have a high, one class that's high.
So again, we have another month of study to go. The group is strongly leaning, I'll say, towards their primary recommendation being the elementary addition with the secondary one to be doing portables at each of the, at three of the four elementaries. We're very interested in bringing forth a solution that's going to solve everything, at least as far as we can see things. And so we for sure want to make sure we're getting input from the board, too, about what the criteria is going forward. There's obviously capital costs here and things that need to be gone through the board and approved to have this happen. So we want to make sure that we're taking all that into account. So if there's things we haven't covered tonight, we'd like to know about those so that we can, again, come back to you with a solution that is going to work.
I had a question. I had a question for Sandy. I know, I know, maybe a couple of months ago, you had presented something on capital costs, and it gave a variety of levels of capital, and what, at what point that drove the taxes up for a home? Because we are seeing, you're going to see a decrease based on our borrowing-
Refunding.
And the refunding. And then this type of expense is going to bring that back up. I was wondering if you could remind me what that threshold is? At what point are we starting to get to the positive territory, adding revenue?
Absolutely. And we've been dealing with that through this whole conversation with the committee. And looking at, at least the estimates that were done last fall with our financial advisors, they did an estimate of what it would take at that point in time with what our refunding would be, which is not going to happen until next fall. But our refunding would save the taxpayers $18 annually on a $250,000 home, and this is on a $15 million bond. We would have an annual tax impact on a $250,000 home by '18, so it washes each other out. So for a $15 million bond, there would not be any tax impact estimated at this point in time last fall. No net tax impact on a $250,000 home.
And to get to that, and what we potentially would be doing from a capital referendum would be maybe things like this, but also we've got deferred maintenance that you're, you've got your master list, and so that would be included in the whole package, right?
That's correct. We had up to $21 million, but there was priority one and two items, so if we had $10 million worth of deferred maintenance that we absolutely have to do under priority one, and another $5 million in, for space, that would come up to the 15 mil. So just as I'm thinking about this, when you come back, it would be nice to have the assumptions in our packet and how they apply to each school. For me, this is me talking, I like that, the question of how we pay for it and how that impacts the taxpayer, but also any other tax implications of what the district is going to do. So we have the big picture. I'm thinking about our tech levy as we're going out, and I want to know the implications of what we do and how that impacts other things. So we, you know, as the taxpayer looks at the total package, we need to have that in mind, I think. The timeline for what you're going to project for us? And I would like to have it personally itemized by the various schools, because I'm not as convinced about some schools as I am right now about others, and so we might have to, we may be able to do a global, we may need to choose, we may not do anything. I don't know what we're going to do, but I'd like to have it broken out so we have some sense of what you're seeing. Frankly, Susan Lindgren surprised me, and maybe there's a good reason for it, but and I don't have last, the packet we looked at last time with me, so, you know, we could talk about that. And then pros and cons, as you all see them? And then we've talked about the office space and some of those miscellaneous sorts of issues we hear about that may have other solutions. So that's my thinking as we go forward with the final sort of conversation.
I'd be interested in having the enrollment numbers two in front of us. I should have thought to grab those tonight, but I knew we weren't making a decision, because as I think back, I think we expected a growth of, you know, 30-some students at Peter Hobart this year. It didn't happen. You know, they showed up at Aquila. The challenge here is we have these reasonably good estimates system-wide, none of them are for particular buildings. And we expected it to go up at Peter Hobart, it didn't. It went up at Aquila, a classroom's worth. We've got a large fifth grade at Peter Hobart that's moving on to the middle school. If the entering class is the same, my recollection, which could be wrong, that's, you know, a classroom's worth of students there, but we don't know. Maybe Peter Hobart is where the extra 30 kids will show up next year, we just don't know. So anyways, it would be helpful to have the enrollment numbers as they are today, because that's the only thing real in terms of those numbers.
And I think ultimately, because we don't have, it's very difficult to project by elementary what the enrollment's going to be. What we, what you've seen so far and what we'll continue to vet over the next month is our best guess of where it makes sense to put them. Susan Lindgren is obviously a question. They have not stretched their capacity as much as, say, Peter Hobart, so part of the reason Peter Hobart's getting a bigger addition is they've taken up all the space they can think of. So when we give them more space, it's going to reset. Susan Lindgren hasn't done that, so they're a little bit more elastic now in what they can handle. But we're trying to look forward and say, we don't want to paint you into a corner for the next five years either, and to give them some breathing room. So it's certainly a question mark and something that we'll look at more and bring forward a more solid recommendation on.
One more idea, which... One more idea, which may be crazy, and you can feel free to tell me that right now or at any later point. Back to my confusion on Central, on the PSI switch. You were putting all of the available, planning for all of the excess space at Central in that model. Is there a model where you move one of the elementaries there? And again, I'm not advocating for this in any way. Peter Hobart's and the high school are in the same attendance area. If you were to put Peter Hobart there, PSI at Hobart, those buildings? And, and maybe you still would be adding some space at Aquila and/or Susan Lindgren, so you were not putting all the excess at Central, you were just putting enough excess to deal with the kids who, the planning for Peter Hobart itself? And not change boundary lines? Is that, you still have, I noticed the busing, it's less complicated than some of the other variations of that would be, but it, Central's a whole lot closer to the high school than Peter Hobart is, but it's not a gigantic difference. Is that something to even consider?
Certainly, we can take a closer look at it. Off the top of my head, I think you are still displacing some community ed in that, so you still get the double whammy of relocating them. We have not talked to them about splitting their program, so by taking a little bit, you're going to start splitting their program.
I can feel Lisa.
Which would have other impacts. And so, I'm just intuitively, I think you're going to get close to the amount of money, because you have that double move going on. And I think you're, there's certainly some political impacts to moving PSI, and I think you'd have to weigh those pretty carefully in any, anything that you did like that.
I'm kind of aware of those, yeah. I just, just trying to think through all the options. I know it's late in the process, it just came to me as I figured out my confusion on that item.
Yeah, I think some Peter Hobart families would not be happy with that either, having, having sat with them, so, but it's an idea, and I'm glad you brought it up, because we need to do some out-of-the-box brainstorming as we look at this, and thanks Julie. One other question I have is, if my memory is right, Peter Hobart, I don't know how they're, we're going to look, how they're using their space now? And it seems to me there was a parent room that got designated at some point, and so I'm wondering if that is still a high priority, if that is still needed, and how much use that's getting and what that might do as one of our, if you can look at that and come back to us on those kinds of space uses, and maybe Peter Hobart's not the only school that is doing that, although it's the only one I recall hearing about, okay?
Yep, I'll look into that.
Anyone else? Thank you. With all the technological problems solved, the high school is ready to roll.
Thank you to Brian Carey, who came back to us to help us out.
Brian, we may need you. We're going to try one more thing here, and if this doesn't work, we're going to switch to the Elmo.
You know what, let me just go get another dongle. I think this will work. Give me two minutes?
Yeah, we can, we can do that for two kids.
Tell a joke or something?
This is your chance for a Rand Paul-type filibuster right here, so, maybe, maybe not 13 hours, but it'd be like, two minutes.
Yeah. I'm going to do my little introduction while Brian is chasing down another dongle for us, and then, we'll use the Elmo until we have our computer working. Good evening, Dr. Bowers and board members, it's great to be here. My name is Rob Metz, I'm the principal at the high school. And behind me frantically working are Scott Myers, who's our assistant principal, and Carrie Schwedering, who's our director of students. We're going to show you a story of the high school tonight. We collect a lot of data here, and usually it falls into one of three categories. It's either what I call general high school data, national numbers and test scores, things like that. Or, the second category that we watch very closely are failure rates. We're always keeping track of how many of our students pass their classes the first time through, because that's a key number at a high school. And then, the third category are really the state tests. Adequate yearly progress, which for those at home means that all of our student groups make, are making progress. And state tests, state reading tests and math tests most specifically. So, we're going to go through all of those, and as we do, you're going to see a lot of good news, a lot of things to be really proud of, proud of in the community. You're also going to see some growth areas that we are working on, and hopefully, when you see those, we'll fill you in on, on what we're doing to address those. So, I'm going to begin. Carrie, can you put one more back further here? And just do a quick review of what you're going to see next. So, these are the, the national scores, the, the big picture items of, of any high school in Minnesota. We're going to look at magazine rankings, because we get rated in a variety of magazines. We're going to look at advanced placement and international baccalaureate exams. We're going to look at our ACT scores and the number of students that are taking the ACT college entrance test. We're going to look at our IB diploma candidates, which is a number we track. And we're going to look at the number of national merit scholars from this past year. We're also going to look at some discipline data that I think is very good and interesting. Introduce to you the Oriole Code, look at how our students of color are doing in our advanced courses, and tell you a little bit about our online courses. So, I'm going to begin this first section, and we'll start with the magazine rankings. Last year, there were three national magazines that rank public high schools in Minnesota. The Washington Post ranked us as the number one public high school in Minnesota. Newsweek ranked us number three, and the US News World Report ranked us number four. So, those are great numbers. Each of those magazines uses a little different rating and ranking system, but one of the key things that they look at are the number of college-level courses that high school students take while they're in high school. So, they're looking at, in our case, it's advanced placement courses and international baccalaureate courses. Some of them expand beyond that, and they look at graduation rate, and they look at state tests, and they look at lots of different things. But, high school rigor is the key thing they look at. And that's why we get rated highly, because we have a very high rigor rate of any public school. We've filled out the forms and sent in information for this year's ratings and rankings, they'll come out in May.
Excuse me, Rob.
Yes?
This is the point where I really do want to interrupt you. One of our, one of the pieces of our mission is to engage all of our students in rigorous academics, and I know you're going to talk more about the numbers of students involved in that, but when you see these kinds of rankings by the magazines, by the national magazines, and see our high school rated this high in the state, that is a wonderful tribute to the leadership, the superintendent, but especially to you and your team at the high school. The work that you've been doing over these last number of years has just been outstanding. And when we see these numbers, I mean, I mean, I'm proud of it, and I'm always happy when I, especially when I meet with people from other districts, I'm always proud to tell them about the number one high school in the state. And you, you and your team have worked this problem, and you've made it happen, and I just can't thank you enough for the great work.
You're welcome, thank you. Whenever we stand in front of parents at registration night or other opportunities, we always thank the parents, because they're the, they're the reason we can do this, the support we get from the community is, is amazing. We're going to look at the advanced placement and international baccalaureate numbers individually. They're both college-level courses. Advanced placement is a US phenomenon. International baccalaureate is an international organization. Both with the same concept though, to apply a high standard of rigor in a high school setting. Our advanced placement tests and numbers of students taking advanced placement classes is going through the rough. We had, even six years ago, when I came to the high school, there were about 400 advanced placement classes per year, and now, we're over 800. International baccalaureate has stayed steady at about 400, but those numbers are going to go up. We're adding a new IB class this next year that 150 students registered for. It's a new English IB class, and it's going to be very popular. So, that number's going to rise as well. Besides the numbers of students taking those classes though, the thing I'm really proud of is how they're doing. I just saw a note a while back, a few weeks ago, that the average, in Minnesota, in advanced placement, you get, at the end of the course, you take a test and you get a score of one through five, and a score of three is considered passing. And in Minnesota, which is a very high-scoring state, only 19% of all advanced placement test takers get a three or higher. At this high school, it's over 50%. It's 54% of our high school students who took advanced placement courses and tests got a three or higher. That's amazing. I mean, it's absolutely incredible. I know a couple of years ago, when I was looking at the data, there was only one high school in Minnesota that had a higher average score than us, and we have, last year, the highest percentage of high school students taking these classes. So, when you put those two things together, it's pretty incredible. I need to give the teachers a big shout-out, because we're one of the only schools in Minnesota that has combined international baccalaureate and advanced placement successfully. Most schools do one or the other, and this school's been able to combine both in sort of a win-win setting. So, the teachers that teach advanced placement, some of them also teach IB, some of them, they all teach regular classes as well, which is another huge benefit. So, to be able to combine these two is really unique.
Rob, and I, you may address this, but later, but maybe this is the appropriate time now. I know, you know, years ago, we've been working on trying to get more students of color into the AP and IB. How are we doing? Are we making progress in that, like with admission possible and getting, and things that have, programs that we've had here at the high school?
Yes, we've definitely made progress, and you're going to see a slide about four more down the road that will show you that. The next category we're going to look at is some other numbers that we track from year to year, ACT scores. Minnesota, once again, I believe last year, had the highest average ACT score of any state in the, in the United States that uses ACT to a high degree, and we matched the state average. Our average ACT score is actually going down slightly, because the number of students taking.
The two students and be able to have a restorative meeting, a mediation, where we can talk about what's been going on, how do we move forward and make sure something like this doesn't happen. So, we do that quite often. We've done it with teachers and students, so teachers who are feeling, you know, frustrated or wanting some extra support surround the student, just sending them out isn't working, what can we do? We can meet and mediate between them and hopefully restore a relationship so that both parties are feeling heard and that it's, they're going back into a more productive classroom. We've also had it with entire groups. Last, about two weeks ago, there was a group of students of color who wanted to talk to the administration, to Rob and Scott, and then to myself, and we sat down and we met, and they just were just sharing how it felt for them to be in the building and what things they felt, and incidences that they either felt invisible or empowered, and how could they move, you know, that way? And it was just an opportunity for them to feel heard, and I believe they did. They, they actually were very appreciative, and we were very appreciative that they were willing to have that conversation with us. So, those are things that we just see as, as a really great place that our building is heading. And on that note.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I did want to just say one thing about, when we look at these numbers, it's important to realize that they're numbers of incidences and not numbers of students. You may have heard us kind of going back and forth as we go through this presentation, because as our conversation expanded, we wanted to find out how many students were truly affected. These are just, the data you're seeing now just reflects overall incidences. So, you could have a student with multiple representation in these groups.
Thank you, that's a good clarification. So, on that, I've touched a little bit of kind of the culture and the.
Before you, I just want to stop a minute and comment on, on what you've just been talking about. Because I am our representative to the intermediate 287 board, and one of the things we're talking about there is increasing graduation rates in Hennepin County. And one of the findings that they've noticed in the studies they've been doing with superintendents is that out-of-school suspensions have a high correlation to impacting students not graduating, that there's a huge ramification that can flow from that. And so, I'm very pleased to see that you're working so hard to reduce out-of-school suspensions, and I hope that continues, because our mission statement, not only is it good for students, but our mission statements is geared to that, and what we want is all of our students to achieve the highest level of achievement and become contributing members of society, and that high school diploma is so critical, such a critical step. So, what you're doing really ties together with everything, and I want to thank you for the results you're getting.
Thank you. So, the next thing that I will just touch on here is the Oriole Code, and this is really, I think, very exciting. We looked at, we actually brought in Carrie Runkie-Jones and Chris Weaver, who is a staff member here at the high school, and they pulled together a group of about 20 students, and it was very specific as to they wanted to make sure that they had a wide net, cast a wide net, to get representatives from all grades, all groups, race, gender, so looking at a variety. And actually, part of the introduction that they started with is, you know, who do you represent and what do you bring to this? And so, it kind of gave them a voice, so this is who, this is what's important to me, I want to make sure my voice or my representation is heard. So, they spent, they spent an entire day really absolutely student-centered of what they wanted this school to be. And so, we look at this a little bit like, what is the culture or the climate of our school? And so, they really looked at it from a strength-based of what was important to them and what they felt either we already have or we need to have more of. And this is what they created, and right now, actually, Chris is working with some students to, to make some videos and to really roll this out as the school year moves on to, before the end of this year. But, they created the design of this, what it all means, and even came up with their own kind of slogan to the end of this. So, again, I just think it's really encouraging and pretty powerful that this is really student-driven and something that they want to really make their mark on. And ultimately, I think we'll only continue to enhance our school and really change, continue to change positively what we're doing here at St. Louis Park.
Jim, here's the answer to your question about students of color in advanced courses. We have, this past year, 113. We just use the terminology black and brown students, that comes from Glenn Singleton directly, so we're using his terminology. That took over 270 advanced placement or international baccalaureate or honors classes here at the high school this year, and passed at an over 95% rate. I remember, six years ago, when I came here, there were about a dozen students on this list. I want to give a lot of credit to the teachers in our school, Leanne Stevens and Oscar Reed, who are the catalyst behind really recruiting, finding, identifying, pushing students into these classes, finding safe places for them. We have some key teachers that are fabulous, I'll mention Greg Goddard, I hate to leave people out, but his advanced placement psychology class is a perfect place for a student who's taking their first AP class to try it. I was walking through the bus just a couple of days ago, and one of our favorite students, who's a senior who'll be graduating on time this year, said, "Mr. Metz, I got a B+ in AP Psych for semester." I mean, you'd have never believed it as a ninth grader, now here he is, going to graduate, and he had, he was very, very proud. So, that number keeps rising, and I see no reason why it won't continue to in the future.
Rob.
Yes?
A couple of things here. If, I had to run back on some numbers, and you helped me with some of that, thank you.
Yes.
But I think, if my calculations are correct, it's about 188% increase from last year as far as participation, which is fantastic. And it's, it's your, your teachers, your instructors and everyone behind you, but it's also a credit to you in giving them the empowerment to do the things that they're doing and coach them through what they need to do.
Thank you. I mean, even, even a few years ago, it's a philosophy of, what are these classes for? So, international baccalaureate and advanced placement, some places, the school decides who enters. There's a score that you have to reach to be in the class. We've done it just the opposite across the school now, over the last few years, and we've said, any student that wants to challenge themselves, whether it's the ninth-grade block, honors block, or whether it's an advanced placement or an international baccalaureate class. class, there's no gatekeeper keeping you out. If you want to challenge yourself, you can do it. Now, sometimes students do challenge themselves and they can't, they can't do it, and we have to move them back out again. But I think that's still a much healthier way to go than for us to somehow limit these numbers. So we're telling people, try it. It's very different for the teachers if they're not used to this. So back in the old days of our ninth-grade honors block, we limited the number of students that could enter that block. We limited it to 90, and the teachers were used to just flying with 90 students. Now we're saying, if you want to be in ninth-grade honors and you think you can do it, sign up. And if you can't, if you're not passing by the end of the first quarter, we'll move you out, but we're not going to deny you an opportunity. That means that the teacher now, instead of having 90, has 120, and they have to do a lot more catching people up and keeping people up than they're used to. So I give the teachers a lot of credit for doing that, and I think that mindset has changed throughout the school.
Rob, just to follow up, I recall it, I just didn't see any of that trend data. And so that would actually have been interesting. I mean, you know, I kind of remember the days of 12 and 15, and so it is really remarkable, and it just shows well they've seen that trend data.
It's really, it's really climbing. And then the last thing I wanted to point out before we shift gears a little bit is the number of online courses we offer. We offer online courses only for credit recovery. So it used to be, if you failed a class at the high school here, you'd have to either retake that class here or go to another school. And we were losing a lot of students each year who were deciding to go to another school. Now we're offering credit recovery online right here, and it's working great. So three years ago, we had 50 credits made up online. Last year, or two years ago, 100. This past year, 215 credits were made up online, and we're finding more ways every month to help students make up credits online. So this is growing rapidly, and again, we're dabbling in using it for not-credit recovery. So far, we've avoided that. We haven't said, if you don't want to take math with Ms. Wawernik, you can take it online. We haven't done that. We've said, you need to take it with one of our teachers first. So anyway, we're constantly talking about that philosophy.
And that's my question. I am thrilled that that many more students are making up the credits they need, and I presume that is and will have an impact on our high school graduation rate, which is critical for those students. I always have a little worry about whether the classes are as rigorous, mostly because I don't know what's in there, as are other classes, but when we've got this many students earning so many credits, is there something we can learn from that as to how to have engaged them in the first place and not lost them to the point that they failed the class and needed to do the credit recovery?
Well, I'm hoping, if all goes well, if you see the next slide here, the next one or two slides, we won't need to have as many students making up credits that they've lost in ninth and 10th grade. Right now, the online classes are only available to juniors and seniors. So what typically happens is, if I wasn't really, didn't have my nose to the grindstone, let's say, in ninth and 10th grade, and I got behind in credits, as graduation gets closer, I somehow get more motivated, and that's what's happening. So juniors and seniors are counting up the credits they need to graduate, and now they're saying, I'll do it, where in ninth and 10th grade, they weren't quite as motivated.
So is that the advantage of the online, then? It just, they take a bigger load, then? I mean, they can fit it in at night or whenever, and that's the advantage? They can just do more in less time?
They can do more in less time. It's 24/7. They can work on weekends. They can work at night. The other thing that they do is they can test out a part of the class. So if I took US History in 10th grade and I needed 60% to pass, and I got 59, so I failed the class, I didn't get the credit, but I actually learned a lot, and I might not have passed because I didn't turn in my homework. It might have nothing to do with how much I know about US History. So when I take US History online, I take a pre-test, and I can test out of as much of the class as I know, and then only work on what I don't know. And that works much better with 17- and 18-year-olds.
And that raises interesting questions that I think you're addressing on grading policies, and we can talk about that sometime.
That would be another meeting.
And I'd love to sometime, but to know you are is enough. But I just wanted to, as I recall, we're using the credit recovery for high school summer school as well, so sometimes a lot of these credits are being made up in the summer when the kids aren't taking other classes.
Yes, that's another good reason, is because if I start taking it during the year and I'm not quite done, I can finish in summer school. Now, we're going to switch gears and go to failure rates, and at this school, it's kind of a negative way to think about it, but it's actually something we're really focused on, just for the reasons Julie was mentioning before, is one of the key numbers in any high school is the ninth-grade failure rate. If you pass all your classes in ninth grade, you're going to graduate in four years, almost 100% of the time. If you fail one class in ninth grade, you can probably still make it. If you fail more than one in ninth grade, then you're up against it right away. So your chances of graduating in four years go down dramatically. So ninth grade is a very key place, and we've, for 15 years now, had something called the Ninth Grade Program or the BAR Program, which is focused on reducing ninth-grade failure rates. This shows you the past few years where our numbers continue to get better and better and better. This year, first semester, we had the lowest first semester failure rate we've ever had, which was 11.5%. It shows 12% here. Those are students that had one or more Fs the first semester of ninth grade. Of that 12%, half of them only had one F, which means, in my inverted way of thinking about it, 94% of our ninth graders are on track to graduate in four years. The 6% who had multiple Fs, we know who they are, we know their names, we know what classes they failed, we know what classes they're taking now. We have the whole team of ninth-grade teachers circling around those 6% of our ninth graders, and if there's any way to get them through the second semester without an F, we're going to try to do it. So the BAR Program has continued to work for us, and you probably know that it's part of several grants, and we are training three other high schools around the country on how to do this ninth-grade program. And the more we train them, the better we get. So I think sending our teachers out, training other schools, is the reason that our numbers keep dropping. So it's a, it's a big thing. The teachers here, if you ask them, how do we know if we're doing a good job? They would say it's the failure rate. And if the grants that we write, that's what they're looking at. They're not looking at ACT scores or IB classes. They're looking at failure rates. They're trying to, as we apply for grants, that's a key number, and can you get that failure rate as low as you possibly can? So with that, we're going to switch to our third and final topic, which are state tests, adequate yearly progress, MCA reading and MCA math, and Mr. Myers is going to take over from here.
All right. First thing I'm going to talk about is kind of an overview of what we're going to see. There's some important things that we should remember. As we look at these numbers, some of these numbers are based on the old criteria before the waiver of No Child Left Behind, and other numbers are based on the new criteria after the waiver for No Child Left Behind. So as I go through these pages, I'll kind of tell you whether we're looking at numbers that are based on old criteria or new criteria. And just a quick rule of reference is, any goals that you see from last year, those are going to be based on the old criteria, which had to do with the 100% proficiency by 2014. And then I'll talk about the new criteria for the goals that we have and then for the results, because that's what we were measured upon. If you take a look at this first slide here, our high school was able to distinguish ourselves from quite a few high schools in that we met AYP in all the categories that you see listed up here. You do see a couple areas where we didn't have enough students to meet the minimum number in categories, but if you look both math and reading, you can see there that we met all the AYP criteria. As I said before, these, the numbers that you just saw there were based on the new criteria in terms of whether we met that, okay? As you look at this slide, if you look at the goals on the, what would be the left side of the screen there for you, 87% of all students was our goal for proficiency, and 74% for our black students. Once again, those goals were based on the old criteria. If you look over in the results column, then, you can see an 82% proficiency rate for all students, 57% proficiency rate for black students, and a 92% proficiency rate for white students. I'm going to go to actually the next slide to give you a broader picture of what this means overall. Since the old criteria and the new criteria can be confusing a little bit, what we did is we put our reading proficiency progress over the last, since 2008 till now. And if you take a look up here, there is all students in our school compared to students in the state of Minnesota. So that's kind of in the middle of the chart there. And then you can also see white students around there and black students. So we've not only showed kind of our comparison to the state, but our comparison in terms of race. There's some good news and some bad news. I think the state, as well as the nation, is definitely working to reduce the achievement gap, but we're pretty happy about the results that we saw in 2011 and 2012 there. As you can see, there was an uptick, and actually, if we go all the way back to 2010, you can see an increase there. And then if you compare our school to the state average, we've been able to maintain and sometimes improve some distance in terms of how we're doing there. Now, as you can see there, we've had a little bit of a dip this year, and that's going to lead me into the next slide to talk about some of the interventions we have in our building. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting one slide ahead here. If we take a look at the reading goals here, these would be based on the new criteria also. So if you compare the old goals to the new goals, they may not necessarily line up because they're based on different criteria. But moving forward this year, we're looking at all students having an 87% proficiency rate, and we're aiming for a black student proficiency rate of 69%.
I got a question on that. Is the 69%, is that your goal for the high school, St. Louis Park, St. Louis, or is it the state goal?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So the previous old goals, that's a good way to think of it. The old criteria that we had were really based on kind of the state suggestion of 100% and really the federal suggestion of 100% by 2014. What we're doing now is, we're working through our data specialist, Prachi Mukherjee, and she's helping us kind of realign to reduce the achievement gap over time, and this, this goal that you're seeing up here would be more of a goal set here in St. Louis Park rather than one that's set by the state.
Realistic goal, then, is what I, is how I, how I see it, is you can't expect a student to increase 200% over a year. A realistic goal is this, what, 12%?
That definitely was the rationale that we had for setting these goals. As we look at the interventions, this talks a little bit more about the things that we're going to do. Obviously, there's quite a few things on this page, so I'm going to focus in on a few, and I do apologize because of the technical difficulties. We're unable to see the ones that are highlighted, but if we go down to the Tier One category, these are interventions that would be happening in every classroom throughout our building. And the, the concept behind Tier One interventions is every student would receive these. And you see some of the work that's being done in our PLCs and on our late starts and early release dates, and Ms. Swidering earlier talked about the restorative practices, so that's one that's highlighted there. And restorative practices are not only helpful to keep students in class, but also to keep students engaged and to keep a relationship maintained or hopefully improved between their student and their teacher. So our restorative practices are aiming to do that in every classroom. Obviously, that would be in our reading classrooms also. If we look over at Dr. Shiroki Holly, perhaps a better label for that would be cultural linguistics. That's one of his specialties. He has joined us for some late start, early release dates, and he has started to create, he's started to give us some tools and some strategies for addressing cultural linguistics in our classroom, and really, the goal is to make the classroom culturally appropriate for all students. Some examples of some of the activities he may do is, would be, that tied particularly to reading is something called code-switching. So he may take something that would be considered home language and try to transform that to academic language. So all in all, not a brand-new idea, but he's bringing us some fresh ideas and strategies that really pertain to the populations we serve here in St. Louis Park. If we move up to the Tier Three interventions, that's where the number of students who receive those services would reduce. And so the third tier is not meant to be in every classroom, but it's meant for students who have either shown a need or have tested at a certain range. And so we have a Read 180 program that's been very successful. It's been going on for years here at the high school. And Read 180 is a classroom to help develop reading skills, and it's really a three-part classroom. One part would be assessment, one part would be small group instruction, and another part would be some independent work or independent reading. The concept behind Read 180 is to use the, use the assessment to kind of meet the needs of each student where they are in terms of their reading level. We have a large number of 10th-grade students that are served in that class, English language learners, and then also students receiving special services. If we transfer to math here, once again, I just have to point out that our goals that are on this page, once again, on your left there, are set by the old criteria before the No Child Left Behind waiver, and you can see a 69% goal that was set for all students and a 48% goal for our black students. If you move over to the results column, you see something that's not necessarily uncommon to the state as well as the nation, which is some math scores that I think any educator would want to see improved. If you take a look, all students had a 49% rate of proficiency. Our black students were at an 18% proficiency rate, and white students were at a 64% proficiency rate. I'm going to move into the next slide just again to show you a little bit more of a comparison, because if we compare the goals for the old criteria to our results, they don't always tell the full story on kind of what the high school has been doing. If we go once again all the way back to 2008 and look at our proficiency ratings, on this chart, again, we are comparing black students, white students, all students, and, all students at St. Louis Park, sorry, and students in Minnesota. And we noticed some great gains in 2008 for our black students, and we've been pretty happy about maintaining those levels. However, we do have a bit of a dip this last year here. It does mirror some of the trends that we're seeing for the state and for all students, but this is definitely an area where we want to focus. And when we get to our reading interventions, or I'm sorry, when we get to our math interventions, you're going to hear some specific strategies that will be aimed primarily for our black students to help improve scores. Our goals for 2012, 2013, for all students would be 65% proficiency, and for our black students, 37% proficiency. And for our interventions, once again, I apologize, it will be hard to see the highlighted parts, but let's move up to the third-tier interventions. And the third-tier interventions, once again, you know, in terms of math, you can think about, those would be interventions targeted for specific students who are struggling to pass classes, and actually, in the, in high schools in Minnesota for sure, and also in the nation, algebra is one area of concern. If you take a look at the bottom of the third-tier interventions, you'll see a 10th-through-12th grade algebra class. The majority of our algebra students here at the senior high are ninth graders, and one of our math teachers, actually the department head, Eric Alquist, had an idea to shift some of the students in 10th and 12th grade into their own algebra class. And what we noticed when that happened is, not only an improvement with the students in 10th and 12th grade algebra, but also an improvement in some of the scores with our ninth-grade students. So just putting them with a light group in terms of where they were in their academic journey appeared to be helpful and increased not only class grades but scores on some of the tests.
Is that, did I understand you to say you took some ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, put them all in one class, and they progressed?
Good question. We, what we did basically is had the ninth grader, a ninth-grade algebra class. We worked out the scheduling so that ninth graders would have algebra together, and then the- then the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders would have a separate class for algebra. And because what the department heads were seeing is a similar rate of mastery of concepts for tenth through twelfth and a similar rate of, for the ninth graders.
So kind of the same instruction, but different classes?
Definitely the same instruction, but it would be kind of the nuances and maybe the pacing on a given day, or the concepts that are covered or possibly reviewed.
Thank you.
As we stay in that third tier, we are doing something experimental this year that we're hoping will apply to all of our math classes. And we have it listed as a new math class because we're really starting at second semester here. And we don't have a name for it, but we're really hoping that it's gonna expand to all of our classes. And we're looking to make a culturally appropriate math classroom. We have two co-teachers in this classroom, Amy Oaken and Leanne Stevens are co-teaching this group together. And one of the teachers is a math specialist, and another teacher is focusing on cultural relevance in the classroom. And what, as I said, what we're hoping is finding strategies that work in this math class that could be applied to all math classes. All the students in this class are juniors. They all volunteered to be in this class, and they're all black students. And so what we've seen initially is definitely more comfort and more discussion, and what we're hoping to see follow that is increased scores. And as I said, this is a, this is a pretty new initiative, so we'll see what happens, and hopefully our scores will increase. One other place I'd like to talk about, it's in the second-tier category, and you can think of it as a volunteer location. It's in our learning lab, it's called the Math Resource Room. And in the Math Resource Room, we have a licensed math teacher who's available throughout the day for students to come on a pass or a referral by their math teacher. And they can do anything from catch-up or master concepts all the way to catching up on work or relearning entire topics.
This may be crazy, like Julie's question might have been earlier, but I like, I see you're using Read One Eighty and lots of other interventions, which I like. I'm wondering if you've, about Alec Math, and, because I'm wondering if kids come to you not without the basics, and if there's some way that they need online or Alec Math or something, that, which is used in the elementaries, to get the basics faster if it's possible at their age. So, could you speak to that?
Yeah, we had two classes of Alex Math the last two years, and we've abandoned it this year. We just didn't get good results at the high school level. Where we are using it is in ESL. So we have an ESL math class for students who don't have enough English yet to go into a regular math class, and they're using Alex, and it's working great with them. So at the moment, that's where we're using Alex.
Why do you think that is, that it works out that way? That it works for the LL students, but maybe not for the rest?
I think because there's a smaller number of students in the room, and Alex is pretty self-paced at the high school level at least. So you're doing some work, the computer is assessing you and giving you the next problem. So if you get it right, it's giving you a harder problem. If you're getting it wrong, it's giving you an easier problem. It's taking you through a set of, through a set of skills that are all related to one another. There's like six topics, and you work through each topic individually. I think many of the students, the reason it didn't work for us, I think, is that the students weren't independent enough. These were ninth graders, they weren't very skilled at math in the first place, and I don't think they had enough independence to really use it the way it was intended to be used. In ESL, it's a smaller number of students, the students are very eager, and they can't wait to get at the next problem.
I just wanna remind people that the math proficiency rate really has, it matters right now because the grad test, which, and we probably have a slightly higher rate on the grad test-
We do.
-because it's a subset of the MCA. But unless something changes, kids who don't pass that test and are currently juniors, I think it's next year's graduating class-
Yes.
-can't graduate. They can take it again a couple of times, but they, the exception now that you can take it three times and fail and still graduate eliminates, it goes away. So this matters. Now, on the other hand, I think the odds are pretty good that that's gonna change in the legislature this year, because the bill has been introduced to do that, but it shows the importance of this. And I think the goal that, or the measure that Prachi's using to set these goals and work with you to set these goals is to cut that, the gap, the, what we call the achievement gap, but the score gap between our students of color and our white students, cut that in half. Basically, each makes it halfway to proficiency by two thousand eighteen or so, which will cut that gap in half. So that's why some of these are very ambitious, as they should be, because we still have a long ways to go. And I just wanna explain that there's a method to math-
There is, and for those at home, it's a little tricky, but the simple way of explaining it is, the, each state gets to set their own criteria, create their own test. Minnesota decided to set a very difficult test, which is great. It's holding us accountable, holding the bar very high. Right now, as Julie was referring to, students don't have to pass that test to graduate. So they're slightly, at least the seniors, I'm speaking about the seniors this year, they're slightly less motivated. They know when they take the reading test, they have to pass it to graduate. Up until now, the last few years, they've known that when they took that math test, they didn't have to pass it to graduate. So their motivation rate is not as high as it will be in the future when they know it's a high-stakes test. The other thing to remember is, when we talk about proficiency rate, we're talking about passing the test. But within the test, there are grad questions. And if we're talking about graduating from high school, you don't have to actually pass the whole test, you have to pass the grad questions. So back in the old days, when students thought they had to pass this test to graduate, we would have about fifty percent of our students in the fifty percent pass the entire test, but about seventy-five percent pass the grad questions inside of the test. So the way it will eventually work is they'll take this test in eleventh grade. If they, if they're not proficient, pass the whole test. Many more will pass the grad questions within the test. Those that don't pass will have four more attempts at this school to retake it their senior year, and each, one time each quarter. That's what we are doing in reading right now. So as it becomes a high-stakes test again, I think the motivation of the students will increase, and the grad questions within the test will be answered to a much higher degree. Right now, if you don't think the test counts, you're not really applying yourself all of the time. Many of our students do, of course, but not all of them do. And so you probably aren't gonna do well on the grad questions either.
That's a great explanation, and from everything I've seen, it is a hard test. Not only that, our passing rate, which they set each year, or his passing point, proficiency is fairly rigorous as well, so.
Right. And our math teachers were meeting all day today, I mean, they're totally focused on this, as are math teachers across the state. I mean, this is a big deal. I know we're taking too long, but you might also be interested in knowing that algebra used to be a ninth-grade class, now it's an eighth-grade class, or at least a high percentage of it is taught in eighth grade. So now, for the first time ever, more than half of our ninth graders have already completed algebra, and they're coming into the high school geometry or above. That is really gonna help us, because part of the reason that students weren't passing the math test is they weren't in the right course in their junior year. In the old system, you took algebra in ninth grade, geometry in tenth, advanced algebra in eleventh. If you got tripped up along the way, or if you came into ninth grade, you weren't even in algebra in ninth grade, you didn't have a chance, because you were taking pre-algebra in ninth grade, algebra in tenth grade, geometry in eleventh grade, and the test is gonna be based on advanced algebra. So by moving everything down, which the state did a few years ago, there's a much higher likelihood that a year or two from now, the students that are juniors will be in advanced algebra.
Rob, could you talk, one of the big changes the high school made this year is with the academies?
Yes.
And really trying to get some invigorating curriculum for whatever academy you were in, that you would hope that even that the fifteen percent would take, you know, that make them that interesting. Could you talk a little bit about the implementation?
I can, and a good way of thinking of the academy is, every student at the high school has to take a certain number of elective courses. Usually, it's between twelve and fourteen elective courses before they graduate. Everything I read, and I just was reading articles in the paper this week again, that one of the key goals for high schools now is to connect with a college, to have a relationship with what happens once you leave here, so that students have in their mind that they're going somewhere once they leave here. We're even talking to ninth graders about a K through fourteen system right now. We've kind of abandoned the K-12, it's a K-14 system. So right away in their head, they're thinking, when I leave this high school, I am going to someplace. The idea of the academies is to create some classes that connect to the outside world. So all of these classes are being created with the help of either Normandale, Hannah County Technical School, Inver Hills, someplace outside of us, so that we know that what we're doing is aligning with what they're doing. It's also a way to take electives that might seem random to a student. What electives are you taking? Well, I'll just take this, and this, and this, and this. This is forcing them to think of electives in a career pathway. So what it boils down to is about a third of the electives that a student takes now have to be taken in a college career pathway. In tenth grade, we have five classes that are up and running this year for the first time, excuse me, four classes: Law and Public Service, Healthcare Core, Media Arts, and Business Innovation. Now, next year in eleventh grade, we're adding five more that align with the four you just heard: Criminal Justice, which is a Normandale class, Intro to Criminal Justice, Healthcare Terminology, Intro to Marketing, Digital Artwork, and Flash Game Programming. So we're gonna have teachers from our school working with teachers from these community college system, designing these courses. Students that take them have an option of taking them as a high school class, which most will, or they can take them and actually get college credit, depending on how they do, and if they end up going to those institutions. So the college credit part of it is nice, but it's really a byproduct of working with an outside group, trying to align what we're doing with what the next level is doing. And even just the meetings we've had have been so beneficial for our teachers to sit with their teachers and say, hey, for this digital artwork class to be college-worthy, this is what it has to have, I can show you how to do it, we're gonna put it in place. And then students will have the option of taking that class as a college credit or as a high school credit.
And what do you, what have you learned to date with?
We've learned a lot. I think one thing I learned is that, what we just mentioned, is that the actual achieving the college credit isn't as important as the experience of taking the class, and the value of our teachers connecting with people outside of this school is really important. I don't know what this is going to turn into. If we could look in a crystal ball five years from now, what kind of a relationship will we have with Normandale? They're very eager to work with us because they're anxious for our students to come there. They know that one of their issues is they have a very low retention rate. They want more students to get to Normandale and to stay there and to graduate. And the reason they don't most of the time is because they come with deficits, and they know that students that come walking in the door at Normandale or Inver Hills with three to six credits in their back pocket, they already have an ID card, they've already registered at Normandale, they've already taken the Accuplacer, they're gonna, they're gonna do much better. So this is benefiting the post-secondary institutions, and it's benefiting us. So I think we're about a third of the way down the path of what this is gonna become. We have a big college career fair here next week, where over a hundred-some colleges and universities are gonna be in our fieldhouse. Just one more step of trying to get every student thinking about, what am I doing when I leave here?
Yeah, Rob, picking up on a couple of changes, or one other changes. I know, I think it was this year, you started a couple of days, and refresh me and the community where you're starting, the students are starting class a little later, the teachers are here meeting. So the question is, how is that going for the teacher? What is the plan, what is the program? How is that going for the teachers?
Yes.
And how are the students doing? Are they supervised, and how's that working?
Students are doing great. I am amazed. We are starting school a little bit later on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings. They're arriving here at the same time, so they have a little extra mingling time in the morning. And I was very concerned about what they would do during that mingling time, but they have been fabulous. The idea is, you saw our failure rates in ninth grade, how low they are right now, they're fabulous, because those ninth-grade teachers are working in teams, and they have time during the day to do that. We're trying to take that ninth-grade model and move it to tenth grade. The tenth-grade teachers don't have time in the day to do that. So on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, they're meeting in teams, tenth-grade teachers, looking at lists of students, and trying to intervene to reduce the failure rate in tenth grade, just like it is in ninth grade. The schools that we're helping with in our grants are all coming here this spring for a meeting, two from Maine and one from California, and they're eager to take what we're trying to do in tenth grade and use it in their schools, too. So we're working through a lot of bugs, believe me. We're finding a lot of problems and trying to solve them as we go. But the idea is that teams of teachers have to work together to focus on what students need and try to fix as many as they can. And they can do it if they have time, and if they use the right system. And we have the right system, our ninth-grade system is the right system. So the catch is, can we give them time to do it? If we can, it'll work. I have no doubt it would work in tenth grade, just like it would work in ninth grade, if we could get the teachers the time to do it. So that's the idea of starting a little bit later on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Anybody else? Before I let you go, one more thing. Carrie, could I ask you to, the Oriole Code that you discussed, I understand, respect, success, integrity, and diversity. The word you used was upstander. Could you explain that word just a little bit more?
That's part of the bullying coalition group that came up with that. And so we, obviously, it's a district-wide, a community-wide initiative, and so the students felt that it was really important that that would be part of ours as well. So they talk about bystanders and bullying and that kind of a thing, but it's really about being somebody that you're gonna stand up. When you see something that isn't right going on in your school, in your city, that you feel empowered to stand up and to say something about it. So that's what that is, and I don't wanna, the students could say it so much more eloquently than I can, but it was important to them, they came up with that. So that's where it came from, is that mission.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw the CNN follow-up on the movie Bullying? It was on this past Sunday night. You can go to CNN's website and pick up on it, too. But one of the statistics that just blew me away was the fact that in Bullying, and they actually showed bullying on a bus, now it was younger kids, but I mean, it happens everywhere. But the fact is, when we talk to our students, there's very little bullying that goes on, and they will just tell us, and I watch the body language of the students. So I mean, they're not, you know, they're not hanging their heads over it, they're sitting up proud and talking about it. But this idea was that in bullying situations, bystanders only become upstanders in ten percent of the cases. This is huge, and to have our students come forward with it, I mean, I'm proud of our principals and his team, I'm proud of our teachers, but when our kids come up with this stuff, I'm really excited about this. And this is, this is neat, neat stuff, and we're awfully proud of our high school. I just wanna thank all of you for all the really great work that you're doing, and on behalf of the board, we sure appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your support.
Next item on our agenda, although I hate to leave the high school, is, the item is the school board compensation update. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. The way I say it is that this board does get paid. A lot of people don't know that, but we make, on the average, a little bit over three thousand dollars a year. It's three thousand oh sixty-four. The clerk makes a little more, and the chair makes a little more. Compared to districts around us, we are on the low side. So at this point in time, unless someone wants to propose differently, I propose we leave the subject at that, unless someone else has more to say. Go ahead.
You know-
Go ahead, Nancy.
You know, we're not at the action part of the agenda, but it would be my intent to move that we increase our pay by 5%, just so we can talk about that when that comes. This school board has not done any increase in five years. Of the 17 districts listed here, three make, three are a little less and the rest are higher. And Hopkins is at 4,953, Robbinsdale's at 5,700. This board is a little over 3,000 as you look at it. And I just think that it's probably time, given, I just think it's time, so.
I actually don't think we've had an increase or no more than one increase. This is the 10th time I will have addressed this issue. And if there was an increase once, that was it, and there was a decrease in one year. So I've, I've been totally opposed to increases, but after 10 years, I'm, and having us now down at essentially the bottom of the pile, I'm, I'm willing to talk about it.
Since Joe?
Since people are talking now, I'll, I'll talk now. So I know people watch the historical school board meetings religiously and know what I said on this subject last year, but I'll, I'll reiterate for those who don't remember. Uh, you know, I said last year that I think generally we're, it would be nice to have an increase in order to allow people of more modest means to be on the board and to have the, the money to pay babysitters and attend the meetings and, and do those sort of things. But I, you know, I voted along with, with a freeze last year, generally because of the economy. I think I'm, I think I'm still in that boat. I, I would vote against a 5% increase. I'm still with the freeze, but again, with the caveat that I just mentioned.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just would concur a lot of the thoughts. I mean, we all, I mean, no one does it for the money here, but there are, you know, picking up dinners and babysitters and cell phone uses that, you know, you needed to be in contact. I mean, there are certain things that, you know, we give a lot of time and devote and, you know, religiously, this board has stayed flat, like, you know, Julie said, one, one decrease. So I would not oppose and I would support, I guess, a, a 5% increase.
Larry?
Um, you know, I, I guess I'm pretty ambivalent. In terms of, I certainly don't do this for the money. The 5% increase, I think it probably, it, it would send a message. I generally probably am more in favor of just leaving us where we are. I, I don't think that a 5% increase really is going to make a whole lot of difference to anybody. But either way, I'm probably okay with it.
And I guess I'm just going to state my position. I'm the guy who says, I used to have two kids in the district. I now have 4,400. And I just don't think the board needs a raise. We do it for the love, not for the money. And it, it's one of those things where, you know, I, I just think it's, it's not appropriate at this time and in this economy for us to be taking raises when there are so many people out of work, out there in the district. So that's just my position. Next item on the agenda, we'll get to, uh, we're onto the action agenda, the approval of the school board compensation. And I am now open for a motion.
You know, I am going to make the motion, because as Julie said, it's been about 10 years and with the decrease. And I think that, so I'm going to move that we increase the school board compensation by 5%, which still leaves us very low and close to the bottom of the pack. But I think on principle, it, you know, it says we've worked hard for, for 10 years and our general fund is in great shape, our schools are in great shape. We got an email last year when we talked about it from someone, one of our teachers, who pretty emphatically said, it's about time you guys rewarded yourself, and it's not a lot of money, and it's, it's important to, to do that. So I understand it's sort of awkward, shall we say, when we're elected to vote yes for something for ourselves, even though we, we, we agree to give raises to everybody else that works with us and far more substantial than this. But I happen to think that it's the right thing to do, and therefore I'm making the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Again, you know, as I say before, I mean, it's, we're not, we're talking about, it's more of a principle thing, it's not, you know, it's 25 or 50 bucks or something. But again, you know, there is, by adding the element of money to it, even though it's not a lot, there is some responsibility that goes with it, you know, looking at your packets. It just adds an air of seriousness that we must respect, and it should be somewhat meaningful, so I, and given all the other things we've talked about, so I second.
I'll just note that it, all it does is rescind that decrease, that we voted two or, no, eight, four, five, 2008, five years ago. So it's, it's just going back to what we were. I'll be perfectly happy if we end up defeating this. I'll vote yes. It's 150 bucks, it's not going to make a difference, but I think it's the right thing to do at this point, just to rescind that rescission.
Okay. The only thing I would like to add to this is, we're probably facing another year where the increase we're going to get from the state is less than 1%. And so to give ourselves a 5% raise in a year where that happens, I just don't think that's a wise move. So that's my view on it. Any further discussion? Okay. At this point, we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? No?
No.
Okay.
Joe?
Nay. I said nay, no.
Larry?
No.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
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 Okay. We have a four to three vote. We've increased by 5%. Good? Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the approval of changes to Citizens, Citizens Bank Accounts and signers. It is recommended that the school board approve the changes to the proposed signers for Citizens Bank. A copy of the approved minutes will be provided to Citizens, authorizing changes to be presented. I need a motion to that effect, please.
I'll move it.
Julie moved? Second? Second by Larry? Thank you, Larry.
Sandy has any background information?
Okay. Any, any questions for Sandy on this? None appearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. Seven oh vote. Thank you. Communications and transmittals. Does anyone have anything they want to say?
I don't.
Jeff?
Something. On March 20th, there's going to be, much like Rob was talking about in the career fairs and things like that, Aquila is going to have a career fair for the first time. And I think all the elementaries are going to do it with the, the social counselors are going, are hosting it. So that's where-
Counselors.
The counselors. The counselors. Are, so all, that's where the parents are going to come in and have conversations and exhibits for the students to go through and take a look at some careers that are out there. So it's going to be a fantastic thing. It's going to be through the afternoon, morning and afternoon at Aquila. I don't know about the other schools, though.
Thank you. Nancy?
It's too late if you didn't get there, but if you got there, lame is, that the high school was absolutely stunning. I wanted to say that at this time, I know Bruce, I got to beat Bruce off for this one, but, but I was there and I could not have been more impressed. Student after student after student who stepped up and sang absolutely blew me away. The talent that we had, the way they held themselves with such poise, the pride of the parents and the grandparents, you could feel it, it was palpable in the, in the auditorium. I was sitting next to a mother who, who actually told me on the break that she had no idea her son could sing that well. But all of a sudden, he stepped up and she went, that's my boy! And it was absolutely wonderful. A great job by our music staff and by Tim Rock, who was here and played for us. I may have got the name pronounced wrong, but it was just, just wonderful. So when we talk about it next year, if you didn't get there this year, come next year, because it's so worth it.
And on Saturday night, it was a full house. It was great.
Joe?
We have our next listening session this Wednesday, March 13th, at Susan Lindgren at 7:00 PM. I, I believe it's 7:00 PM. And I'm assuming it's in the media center. Okay. So again-
Media Center Two.
Media Center Two. Susan Lindgren, Wednesday, March 13th.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
To move.
Moved by Julie. Seconded by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, no? Seven oh votes.